Two, one.
All right, I'd like to bring the town council regular meeting for May 3rd to the 21 to order. Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen. Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Present.
And President Kulturitis.
Present.
All five councillors are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. Please stand for a moment, silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for attending tonight. That brings us down to a public comment. And a person's public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes. For group spokesman, please keep your common civil constructive public policy issues. Chair de Serra, as so discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time, it may end the open to a public session. All speakers will be timed by the per pressure. This portion of me shall not exceed 20 minutes. If anybody wishes to speak tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody electronically that has any comments, Dustin?
I received no advanced comments.
Thank you. I will close the open to the republic. That brings us down to consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
My second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I just have a quick question on a on Doc 2158 with the fees paid to Denton, Bing and Greer. Are those temporary? Are those the whole fees or those are they going to be additional? Or is that partial, I guess?
I don't know if that is the entire amount that we have been invoiced. I do not anticipate significant further charges associated with that vendor.
Okay, and that's the same thing with the other, I think, London.
The London Woody Group.
In effect, about the majority of.
I would be, I do not expect any further invoices from that group.
Thank you very much. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. There is no old business tonight. We go down to new business, the 45th Street change order number 022.
Mr. Randall, up to you.
Okay, change order 22 is the first of two change orders related to the time extension for the intermediate completion date. The change order 22 is a total of six days, which are constructibility related. So going back in time, 2019, there were railroad utility delays that forced the accelerated schedule and completion of 45th last year in 2020. Various other delays unfortunately prevented opening of 45th prior to our originally scheduled intermediate completion date of November 30th. So included under this change order are the constructibility related delays, one of which is COVID. There was a three day delay for the ironworkers during the installation of the bottom slab reinforcing at the underpass. And then also an extended period of time for the curing method and material changes per the engineer of record, which was another three days. That included, you know, blanketed dry cure in lieu of a wet cure and a curing compound. So with those various delays, the intent, of course, was to absorb those into the accelerated schedule. But due to the time of the year and various other circumstances, unfortunately, we were unable to do that. So through ongoing discussions last year, we agreed to extend the intermediate completion date to a date of December 18th, following the ribbon cutting ceremony. So to summarize, the change order cost is zero, but we are requesting council approval for a total of six days being added to the intermediate completion date under this change order number 22.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve change order number 22 for in dot contract B 36229 in the amount of six days.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, any discussion?
Lee, my, this is Steve. My question is, given there's no cost associated with the change order, what is the implication?
Well, this is just to extend that contract completion date, essentially eliminating liquidated damages to the contractor for not completing at that time.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Next item is 45th Street change order 023. Lee?
Yes, okay, change order 23 is a follow up to change order 22 for time extension to the intermediate completion date of 12 days, which are railroad related. So within DOT's process of change orders, I have to identify the relationship of these change orders. Therefore, these two are separate. So again, with the same delays in 2019 forcing the accelerated schedule, under this change order is the railroad related delay where the planned tracks, which by the contractor and CN was intended for September 23rd, but due to manpower and equipment availability, the CN railroad was not able to start until October 5th. So essentially 12 days later. So with that, again, we are requesting 12 days now. Once change order 22 is approved, then we can process change order 23, which will then extend and complete our time extension request to 1218, December 18th, 2020. Again, the cost is $0, only the addition of 12 days to the intermediate completion date for your approval.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Sir. I will move to approve change order number 023 for in dot contract B 36229 in the amount of 12 days.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us to 45th change order number 027. Lee?
Yes, okay, change order 27 is for the added curb painting, essentially yellow for the center median curb on Calumet Avenue and 45th Street. This item was not included underneath the contract, but for safety and visibility purposes to separate opposing traffic on both Calumet and 45th, requesting to add this item. Estimated quantity is 6,800 linear feet to paint the median curb. So the vertical face and the top of curb for the center curb itself, including the maintenance of traffic for the contractor to complete this work. The unit cost is $1.52 per foot. This unit cost is also 54 cents below in dot average per linear foot for the same item. So pending your approval, we're requesting change order approval of curb painting at a total cost of $10,336.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve change order number 27 for in dot contract B as employee 36229 in the amount of $10,336.00.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All righty, any discussion on this?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us down to change order premium time to install water main crossing on 45th at Centennial Drive.
Okay, this change order is for Austin Equipment, who was the contractor for Centennial Village. Of course, along with these delays associated with that to our accelerated schedule of 45th, getting that open in 2020. The Centennial Village and their contractor plan to complete this water main installation, essentially on Centennial Drive within Centennial Village to the north, going under 45th and CN Railroad, and then tying into the existing main located on Old 45th, on that north side of what is now green space. So because of our accelerated schedule on 45th, they were pretty well limited to completing this work over the weekend of November 7th and November 8th to avoid any conflict with our construction operations and opening 45th Street. So with that, reached an agreement to reimburse Austin Equipment, excuse me, for the premium time only to perform this work over the weekend on Saturday and Sunday. So on Saturday, it was the halftime for time and a half. And on Sunday, it was at single time for double time, if that makes sense. So this total change order being paid to Austin Equipment, pending your approval, is for the total of $2,124.07.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to approve the premium cost to install water main crossing at 45th Street at Centennial Drive in the amount of $2,124.07.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, two, zero.
Mr. President, I do have a question for Mr. Randall, he's on the phone if I may. Lee, this is Councillor Mellon. I was just wondering how the the work is going on the underpass on 45th right now as far as it's down to one lane. I'm just curious because I know our tracks are going to be closing for the railroad improvements on the 17th. As far as, is that correct, does that still on schedule? So I was just curious because everyone's going to be taking, we have two more weeks to school after that. So everyone is going to be taking that underpass. So I'm just wondering when you think we'll be back to two lanes there.
Gotcha. Well, I'm certainly hopeful that we can complete the work there in open 45th prior to that time. The architectural surface treatment, the staining of the retaining walls is complete. Currently, the landscaping contractor is installing sod along 45th. So they've done a significant portion there, but they're almost done. So once they do that, the contractor plans to bring in another subcontractor to install the anti graffiti coating and also the concrete surface seal for the retaining walls and the parapet walls at the underpass. So once that's completed, then we can open up 45th. So I will certainly press them now knowing that that definitive date of May 17th for the closure at Calumet, that's a full closure, I presume?
It is.
Okay. So let them know that obviously we will have additional traffic volumes on 45th Street for that. So at this point, I don't foresee any issue getting that done prior to, of course, weather depending, given we've got two weeks to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Lee.
Certainly, thank you.
1826, creation of the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund.
Very nice. We're shifting gears here. We're going to the creation of a new fund. This fund is a result of the American Response Plan Act. Funds were projected as a town to receive $4,683,778.52. We're expecting to get our first distribution probably within the next 30 to 60 days, and we'll get a second distribution in 2022. The State Board of Accounts provided us with a directive that we need to set up a separate fund. We have to be very careful on accounting for every penny that we spend. We also will have to come up with guidelines and a detailed plan at a future date on how these funds will be distributed. Right now, the guidelines are for revenue replacement and infrastructure improvements. Those are some of the possibilities. And well, as more information becomes available, but until then, it's helpful to have the fund created and then we can appropriate money into it.
Thank you, Wendy.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to hear ordinance 1826 on first reading and schedule second reading for our next regular scheduled meeting.
I'll second. I will second that.
All right, thank you, Steve. All right, any discussion on this right now?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulewitzky.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Brings us to ordinance 1827, zoning code amendments. Here comes time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, tonight I am presenting an ordinance for your approval, which would enact a significant number of revisions to the Munster zoning ordinance. This would be the fourth set of revisions that you would have approved since the adoption of the character based code in December 2019. This has been, this ordinance in the list of amendments that are included in Exhibit A, were reviewed and discussed at the Plan Commission level in April, and the Plan Commission voted six to one to recommend a favorable or issue a favorable recommendation for approval. Generally speaking, I won't go into every single one of the provisions unless you'd like me to. But they are described in great detail in both a spreadsheet and PowerPoint presentation that were attached to the memo. But in general, I'll say that they clarify our development standards, primarily with respect to commercial and mixed use development. They calibrate the zoning standards to actual conditions. So what I mean by that is they relax some of our tighter standards that we didn't think really worked very well within the specific context of Munster. They clean up some errors and typos. That's pretty self explanatory. There were some things that we missed when we adopted the ordinance. And they rolled back a few of the requirements that we've heard are costly to implement and have little public benefits. Essentially, what what that refers to is there are some, for example, setback standards and lotwood standards that, again, don't, as we kind of enact, implemented the ordinance, we realized that they weren't quite achieving the ends that we hope to achieve. So we're hoping to roll those back. The other thing that I'll say is we're a lot of these revisions deal with some things in residential zoning districts that were kind of inadvertently included in, say, only one of the single family zoning districts, but not others. And so we've got a number of, a number of revisions that deal with single family districts, but not in a substantive way that would affect anybody's property, but really only in a way that kind of brings it back to what the standards were at the time that properties were developed. And again, establishes some consistency across the different zoning districts. I will say that the Plan Commission did strike two of our recommendations at the public hearing that dealt, one which dealt with private lighting types and where we had hoped to sort of open up private parking lot lighting standards to include non ornamental types of fixtures. And so that was struck from the recommendation. The other item that was struck was dealing with monument sign standards. And in both instances, the Plan Commission recommended that we just take a closer look and come up with a more targeted and maybe more detailed approach to both of those subjects. So I would expect that we would return at some point with a different set of standards for your review and approval at a later date. So with that, I will say that the recommendation from the Plan Commission is to approve this ordinance. I was informed by Attorney Weston just prior to the meeting tonight that the recommendation to waive the readings and adopt on the first reading is unnecessary. A zoning amendment does not require multiple readings, so it can be, you can strike that part of the motion.
We just need to adopt the ordinance.
That's correct.
All right, let's see.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 1827, adopting multiple zoning code text amendments with amendments which are noted herein document.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty, any discussion on this?
So I would just add, the vote was six to one. I was the one voting against, and there was only one of the proposed amendments that I didn't really get behind. It's the one on fences on corner lots. So if you look at the presentation, it's, I think, maybe the only picture in here. And my reason for voting against it is because I don't, I don't think it really frankly looks very nice. There are several houses that do have these, so it allows a fence on a corner lot to be basically built into the front yard instead of just going to the, to the side yard. It is shown in the indication here. And, you know, as we're building out new places, there's four corners on each block. So allowing this ordinance would allow theoretically every house to have one of these front yard fences instead of a side yard fence. I understand it can give you more space as a backyard, which is a benefit. I'm just not convinced of the overall benefit to property values if we start getting an overabundance of these throughout town. You know, my preference was on a more like case by case basis. If a resident had wanted to build this, that they could bring it before the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Vander would appropriately pointed out, they would have to show sort of burden. I don't have the exact language that you used, but they'd have to show the hardship of not having that fence, which would be a sort of high bar. But I just wanted to bring that to everyone and kind of take a beat, take a second, think about it, if that's the design standard that we want or not. I know there was a resident who came to speak on behalf of it, so there is some demand. I haven't seen that particular property. The examples we had seen like at the first reading with the Plan Commission didn't really look like, you know, the ideal new build situation. So I just wanted to provide the background. I'm happy to hear anything, any color or other explanation, Tom, you might like to.
I have a question in regards to this. So someone can actually put a five foot fence all the way around this property on this this fixture that Councilman Tulewitzky just showed, six foot or six foot?
Not all the way around, no.
In some unique situations in the town, there are, as it shows on this diagram, houses on very narrow lots that have a front door that opens up to the wide side of the lot. In those instances, these property owners do not have a true backyard. And so historically, the town has permitted them to install fences in the side slash front yard in the same way that someone whose door was on the other side of the building would have installed a fence in their, what's considered their backyard. So what this does is it just permits us to treat this part of the front yard as though it were a side yard or a rear yard.
That didn't answer my question, Tom. Can this person specifically put up a six foot fence on the front of the street?
A six foot fence could be installed as shown on that diagram, up to three feet from the sidewalk.
One of the front yards, but not on both.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It would only be applicable to one side of the yard, yes.
I find it interesting, the Plan Commission argued the same, the same question age away, but you know, 30 years ago. And it was the same thing. We made it illegal. We had a number, so many people were asking for variances that the Town Council changed it and made it the way it's being recommended now. I was against the change.
Mr. President, when we were, we, this has been an issue for many, many months, Tom. When you say this started back maybe in July when we started hearing from residents. So there are multiple residents that have yards in some of the established neighborhoods where they can't even have a backyard. So they can't fence it to protect their children or their animals from running into the street. So it's, I view it as a quality of life issue. While it's maybe not the, you know, the ideal solution, it really is the only solution that they have. And when we looked at this, we looked at, we made it, Tom, you can help me out here if you want, but that's so that it had to be a certain distance away so that you wouldn't ruin the sight line for backing out into someone who's on the sidewalk or coming around the corner.
Right, that's exactly correct. The old rule included that provision that there would be a 45 degree sight triangle preserved at the driveway. But to Councillor Mellon's point, this has been the rule in Munster historically for many, many years, as Councillor Schoen rightly recounted. And so there are a number of situations where, say, one corner has this type of fence, has this arrangement on the property, and the property next door wanted to do the same thing, but because the rule had changed, they were unable to do so. So again, it's, I'd like to say that I'm innovative in my work here, but in this instance, I'm not innovating in any way. This is really the rule that's been the rule in Munster for decades. And as we were reviewing some of these revisions, and there was significant interest from a number of residents in doing this type of building a fence in this location, we sort of came to the realization that, one, it's already been done in many instances, and we've not heard any complaints that it's, that it's already the case in a number of properties. And, two, it's sort of just the location of the fence is no different than it would be if the door, if the front door was on the other side of the building. So you could, if you took a house that was in this type of a situation and you moved the front door to the other side, then the fence could be in there in that location legally. So it's just really, it's sort of, it's only because of the location of the door, which defines where the front yard is, that makes this fence not permitted. But all things being equal, the fence could be in the same location.
One of the arguments that I've heard that made sense to me, Steve, which was the, on the other side, is if you had a steady block with, and every lot was, let's say, 70 feet wide, everybody could have a backyard that is 70 feet wide except the ones on the end because they had to have that extra clearance from the side. And they already are double punished by having to shovel twice as much sidewalk every time it snows. So it just, it seemed that making another imposition wasn't fair. And so that was the argument for allowing that fence to be closer to the street.
There was also one other, Councillor Tulewitzky mentioned doing it a case by case. And which is definitely possible, but it becomes a variance for individuals. And if we're going, you know, we're going to have the same tide come before us multiple times. It become, it is a financial burden and they may not be able to weather all of that now. And I'd also say that in the new subdivisions, covenants are written and it may not be allowed, but it's clear because you're, you're either buying a lot and building new. So you'll read all those covenants as to what you can and cannot do. Whereas in the, the established neighborhoods, you buy a house next door to a house with a fence, and then you move in and you can't have the same type of backyard. So those were two of the points why I thought that the hardship is is evident without individual residents coming forward for variances. And I, and I'm not, most people know that I'm not quick to loosen guidelines or, you know, I, I like to keep the town looking nice and, and have strict guidelines, and that's why. that's why, one of the reasons why the, the monument signs, as well as the lighting issues, were pulled out so we can look at those longer, because those were loosening the guidelines. So it's not something I'm quick to suggest, but in this case, I think that it is a quality of life issue for our residents.
So, Weston, did you have a comment?
I just had a couple of questions. Tom, the, the picture of the proposed ordinance, that, in your PowerPoint?
Yes.
So in this picture, the street is on the left side and on the bottom side, right? So the corner is the lower left?
That's correct.
Okay, so when you're talking about, and you, and then my second question is, is that, under the new ordinance as proposed, can the fence, as you've shown it in this picture, go beyond the back of the, I'm going to call it the back of the house, but it's not really the, the side of the house?
So it could, the fence be installed between the house and the street?
No, could the fence keep coming, you know how it kind of runs from the garage, then, let's say north is up, right? It runs south, and then it's, and then it stops there, where even with the side of the house, right?
Yes.
Right here? Could it, under the new ordinance, could you extend that further?
No.
Okay, so really, you are making a backyard where there is no backyard, and because there's no street on the north side, on the, on the top of the, this lot, there's no issue there for visibility of cars, right? The issue on cars is going to be down in the lower left hand, right?
Yeah. And the only issue with the visibility was in, in the driveway.
Driveway coming out of the garage.
Right, gotcha.
Got it. So, right, and, I mean, I can think of like twelve examples off the top of my head in town where this exact scenario exists.
Yeah, it's very common.
So, I guess, getting back to the philosophical point, Steve, that you made earlier, like, when you have a variance, that's supposed to be like the limited exception to the rule, right? And the legislative body, you guys set the rules. Okay, so when you set a rule, then someone comes in for a variance and says, oh my God, I understand the rule, but in my instance, which there aren't any others, we don't apply this to me. So you're kind of philosophically, if you go the other way and say, well, we're going to ban this, but yet, as a BZA, we're just going to approve them all over town. Now it kind of leans to the argument that, right, and I would say the way, you know, now that I understand the way this ordinance is written better, you know, from a visibility standpoint, and the safety kind of aspect, that's kind of already addressed, you know, there, there are, I mean, in my old neighborhood in White Oak, there was a ton of them. I know over by Frank Hammond, where I live now, because I run those streets, it's like every house has a, I mean, every corner house almost has one. So how do you say to somebody, you know, you can always change your mind, right, at the policy decision, but it's tough then when all these other houses have it, and, oh, sorry, we changed the code and now we're not, you know. So philosophically, it's kind of wrapping your head around like, where do we want to be? And then, if you say, I'm going to ban these, and something happens to those fences that currently exist, and the resident comes in and says, I want to rebuild it, Tom's going to tell him, I'm sorry, you can't without a variance. So now you're going to be sitting there looking at existing residents with existing fences who maybe it's destroyed by a tornado or whatever, are you going to tell them no? Like, and I'm not suggesting I know the answer to that question, I'm just saying that's what you're going to be faced with. So philosophically, where do you want to, where do you kind of be on that?
And my only comments are the same, is, echo of Councilor Mellon's, to ask our residents to come in with a zoning variance on each one of these situations, and, and I am familiar with quite a few of them that are along Broadmore School Street and then also White Oak Avenue. Now, White Oak Avenue, there's part of, between White Oak Avenue, it's a backyard, but on the other side of White Oak Avenue, there's probably three or four, just between Ridge Road and, and Franlin, that are side lots, front lots, side lots type of question. And again, I go by there quite a bit, and there are fences just like any other fences. And while old fences do look bad, again, I think that's part of, that's, it does not make this thing's any situation, this is just, we're asking for residents to keep their fence, and, and I think this is an appropriate ordinance change to, and to go back to what we were doing.
Good. Any other comments right now?
I guess my question is, how, how common is this sort of setup that is depicted here?
Councilor Tullowitsky, if I could answer that, I don't think this setup that's, that's proposed, or that's, that's shown by, by Mr. Vanderwood is very common. I believe the more common approach is that the garage is attached to the house, and the, and the fence is on the outside of the garage. So I, I, I think this picture is not really common. I think the, the common situation is more that the garage is attached to the house, and this is on the side. And what makes it, I think, even more observant, or more, more extreme, is when the person next door to this house, his garage is attached to the house, and he has a fence, or she has a fence coming up to the property line, and then this person that wants the fence, his, his or her garage is attached to the house, and they can't attach to the other garage, or the other fence that's just next door. So it's, it's not, this kind of shows the fence as a breaking up of the property lines. I think what the fence really does in reality, it connects the property lines together. And so I think it's much more of a continuation than a, a break as, as shown in the diagram.
That's a really good point, Councilman Gardner. A good example is along Camelia, on the north side of Camelia, between Columbia and Southwood. And also, that to a lesser extent, that eastern portion of Camelia, as well as it turns into White Oak, very, very common to have a continuous line of fences there. And it would, quite frankly, look odd if it wasn't like that.
If somewhere, when there's, it's already there. No, the last comment, last question I have, is based on something Mr. Weston brought up. I thought, Tom, that we had changed at the, the Plan Commission, the ordinance governing side fences then, that it could actually, or was that the height of the fence? We made it from three to six feet, was allowed at a side, side fence. And just, to that point, want to make sure that it can't move, let's say, to the south here, as Mr. Weston pointed out. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, there was a, there was a previous ordinance that was adopted that raised the height of a fence in the side yard.
But it didn't change the line of the.
Three to six feet. No, it doesn't change the line. There's actually a provision in the code that prevents the installation of a fence between the building and the street. So that's kind of covered in another section. So you'd never be able to put a fence, ever be able to like truly fence in your front yard, like, yard in front of your house.
Okay, well, I appreciate the, all the robust conversation. I think I understand the situation better. Really did take the vote, so we could take a pause and see if this is what we wanted to do. So I'm ready for, I have no further comment.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Mellon?
Yes.
Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Tullowitsky?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you, Tom. I know you worked on this very long and hard, so, we appreciate it. Alrighty, that brings it down to ordinance eighteen twenty-eight, additional appropriations.
Controller Tricia Abbott will come up and provide a little color.
Remember, Trish, we want color now.
Yeah. A little.
Paper has a lot of color on it, as best I can give you, I think. As you know, there were some big budget cuts that we had to take earlier this year to the controlled funds. And we talked about how we were going to use other funds to cover those costs and just shift the way we spend. That's primarily what's happening here with the additional appropriations. We reviewed all the funds to see what can they be used for, how will we use them differently, and to be sure that we have enough appropriations, legal spending authority to do what has been planned. The exhibit here is showing whether the fund is controlled or reporting only controlled, meaning that the state dictates what the budget is. Reporting only means that council has complete say over that. And then the use is, what fund is it going to be used to offset? The biggest number on there is obviously for the bond proceeds, that's a function of the refunding bond that's happening. We have to literally refund and pay for all those bonds that are called. And from a bookkeeping standpoint, we have to have appropriations for it. So that's, that's not truly seventeen million dollars gone. You've got that money coming back in, it's just part of that calling of the bonds.
Those are the ones that we refinanced?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. There was the refinancing last year, and the call happened this year, and then there's the refinancing that just happened last week, and that call comes later this month. I'm sorry, in June. Tonight, you're asked to have first read on the ordinance. The next regular meeting, you'll be asked to have a public hearing and adoption.
Thank you, Trish. Alrighty, let's see.
Mr. President, I would make a motion, we hear proposed ordinance eighteen twenty-eight for additional appropriations on first read, and schedule second reading and a public hearing for May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
There a second?
I'll second.
Alrighty, discussion on this?
Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Mellon?
Yes.
Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Tullowitsky?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five, zero?
Brings us to ordinance eighteen twenty-nine, creation of the CDBG COVID grant fund.
This is very similar to what we approved prior, previously, much smaller dollar amount. This is money that we've already submitted for reimbursement, and we're expecting to get it anytime in the next seven to fourteen days. But as with each of these, we have to set up a separate fund, and so we're asking for a separate fund to be established.
Oh, I would, Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to hear ordinance eighteen twenty-nine on first reading and schedule second reading for the next regular meeting.
There a second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Just one question, is this thirty thousand five thirty-one, is that the extent of? Do we get everything that we had applied for?
We got everything that we applied for, yes.
Okay. That was it?
Okay.
Yes, the next question, should we have applied for more?
Yes, we should have applied for more, but we didn't have, it was very specific in what we could have submitted. And when the, I was going to say decree, when they informed us of what we could use the funds for, it was too late to create programs. So we were able to use it for, fire department was able, when they did inspections, they were able to look to see that the proper signage was out there for COVID prevention. The police department, when they did their business patrols, made sure that there was no, not too many people in the, in the facilities exceeding. So we were able to use those type of expenses. So.
My comment is just.
Not realizing that the microphone was still on.
My answer is. Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Mellon?
Yes.
Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Tullowitsky?
Yes.
And Council President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us down to Baker-Tilly Agreement landfill assurance test.
This is an annual item that we ask you to approve. It is a part of our infinite compliance, due diligence with the Indian Department of Environmental Management as a proud owner of a current or former landfill. Baker-Tilly, again, would like to do the work for us. They do a phenomenal job, and they haven't raised their price, and it would be my recommendation to accept their letter of engagement.
Thank you, Dustin.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move to offer, as the town manager seated right there, to accept the letter of engagement with Baker-Tilly, perform the appropriate financial assurance analysis, not to exceed the amount of sixty-three hundred dollars, to ensure that the town of Munster complies with items, financial assurance required.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
Councilor Schoon?
Yes.
Councilor Mellon?
Yes.
Councilor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilor Tullowitsky?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Alright, thank you.
And you didn't vote, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to know the record, thank you.
Alright, that brings us down to reports.
We have, this is a report, five years ago, the council at the time passed ordinance sixteen eighty-two, which established the motor vehicle excise surtax and the Munster wheel tax. One of the line items in the ordinance said, in five years, we would come back and look at this. That's what it said, and we're looking at it. We looked at it, we compared it to the rates, where everything seems to be in line, we don't have to redo the amendment or ordinance at all. We did establish a fund two fifty-eight for the certain municipal sur, surtax fund, and fund two fifty-nine for the municipal wheel tax fund. There's a balance in, in, in the municipal surplus, and I, on, and I put my comment in the wrong spot, it's one million nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, six hundred and fifty-six cents, one million nine hundred and sixty-four, six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and sixty-nine cents, and fund two fifty-nine is eighty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars in it. We do have that money earmarked for spending to offset budget cuts made to the motor vehicle highway fund and to cover infrastructure improvements in this budgeted year, so.
Thank you, Wendy. And then the other document was just a change order law, description updates.
There was a third item, Dr. Andy. There was, there was an announcement that, that you would like to have the town hall open for outside groups to use, beginning in June. With that reopening, we're going to contemplate, you know, an improved booking system, maybe with a security deposit, just in case, you know, the rooms are left as a, as a mess. And if they're not, they'll, they'll be returned. There's also a small matter of labor for setup and tear down that is often kind of absorbed by the town. And it's not uncommon for a municipality to charge a nominal fee associated with the use of its space. We're not going to look to make money, we're just looking to cover costs a little better than zero.
Mr. President, may I ask a question please? So even if there's just, if the round, let's say, the round table and that conference room was just like, we would, we didn't have to move anything, we were looking at charging a fee for it?
I think it's a question that I should propose to you, so you can at least say no.
I just, I couldn't hear completely, so I just.
I would imagine, you know, there'll be a question of if you want to see that, and it would not be like an onerous fee. And then I, I really do feel strongly that there should be a security deposit, because we have had instances where the place is left at a wreck, but, you know, we've had to put some elbow grease on it.
So you'll be bringing some?
We'll be bringing something to this, this year, yeah.
Hopefully by the next year. I think it's time to open up the town hall again.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Almost forgot again, Dustin, thank you. Alright, that brings us down to portfolio reports. Does anybody have anything they would like to share with the group? No reports for me. Beautiful. Alright, that brings us out to announcements. Our town council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. May tenth, no meeting. May seventeen, Regret Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. May twenty-fourth, no meeting. May thirty-first, no meeting. June seventh, there's a Regret Town Council Redevelopment Commission meeting. On the fourteenth, there is no meeting. That brings us down to adjournment.
Admit that we adjourn.
There a second? Ten seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned. Thank you for attending. We will be moving right into the Redevelopment Commission meeting. I will bring that to order right now. For treasure.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schoon?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Tullowitsky?
Present.
And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
I see John Castro, our liaison to the school board, is present virtually.
I am here, I am here virtually, hello all.
Great. Welcome. That brings us to, open to the public. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Is there anybody electronically? I will close the open to the public. That brings us to consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move, we accept the consent agenda.
As written. There a second?
I'll second that motion.
Very discussion.
Commissioner Schoon?
Oh, go ahead.
Actually, there was something in the notes now. Actually, there was something in the notes now, uh, which is a bit unusual, uh, in regards to four oh seven and four eleven, I was wondering, uh, Mr. Anderson, if there was any developments on that property in a movement?
I believe there have been appraisals done and I may even have the completed appraisals that I have not reviewed yet.
Okay, you're a little hard to hear.
There were appraisals done, uh, on those properties. I have not had a chance to review the work product yet.
Okay.
And just as a side note, I was there the other day and I saw some tulips over there, Ken, and that vacant property.
It's wonderful.
Un- unbelievable, it was in the back of the vacant property, I saw tulips. So it's, I'm sorry about the aside on it. Yeah, they're all over the place.
In front of the schools.
Yeah, in vacant land, it's all there.
Very nice. And even Johnny's tap. Five planters, private property. No, it's not private property. Wow, looks lovely.
Beautiful.
They're still lovely.
It's still lovely.
Mr. Gardner, are you, uh, aware which are the only flowers that are on your face?
Yeah, tulips.
Tulips. See, I'm being better, I'm nothing terrible.
Why don't we get to the roll call?
Meeting and a show tonight, folks. Get your money's worth. All right, we'll get roll call on the consent agenda, Council Commissioner Schoon?
Thank you for telling us what we're voting on. Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tullowitsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five, zero on the consent agenda.
There is nothing under old business, there's nothing under new business, there's nothing under reports, there's nothing under announcements, that brings us down to the adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you again.
Thanks, everyone, have a great night.
Good night, John.
Take care.
Thanks again.
Take care.